Good evening. You're gonna have to excuse me, I don't have much of a voice this evening. But we will start the meeting, the November 19th, 2012, Waukegan City Council Meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
Vice.
Alderman Beedling.
President.
Alderman Newsome.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
We have a quorum, please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Given the lack of a voice, I'm not gonna have any mayor's comments tonight, but what I'll do instead is that we had a young man that was nominated for Volunteer of the Month, and at the last meeting he wasn't able to attend, but he is here tonight, so if Josu Pasila, if I got that right, if you could join us up front? Meet me over at the podium? Wayne, you have the missus Briesky?
No, I don't have it.
Hoseu was nominated, he is a student at Waukegan High, are you at east or west?
East.
He's at east campus, and he came here, oh, was it about two months ago, month and a half ago, to speak to the city council? And that was about spirit event, yes. So, he was nominated, and the list of things that he's involved in at the school is just amazing. And I'm not gonna try to read all of it, but, you know, the volunteerism in this young man is amazing, and it really is, I'm just so proud of you, the things that you've done, I'm sure your family is as well. And what we have is, we have a recognition for you, that is, the city of Waukegan Volunteer of the Month, and like to give that to you, does anybody have a camera here tonight with your family?
My desk.
Well, come on up to take a picture, you and I'll go over here and stand, and then I'll have you make some comments, okay? You know, as a volunteer, I've got this list, if you need that as a reference, because it's an awful lot, please, go ahead.
First of all, thank you to the mayor for his recognition, and some of the things I do, like, in Waukegan are, I'm a member of the Waukegan Bike Project, I help Will with events, like the Bike Day Amstutz over the summer, and I pedicab during art walks. I'm also in the Waukegan High School Student Council, and I'm the Public Relations and Marketing Chair, so I look for things for the student council to do in the community, like, this past summer we helped out in the high school reunion downtown, and also we helped out in the dandelion run, 5K, and we're like, in the summer, we're gonna donate some items to the Waukegan Housing Authority for families that need, like, food or Christmas presents. Also at school, I'm an intern at the College and Career Center, where I deliver letters to students or make flyers for the center. I'm a member of the National Honor Society, and for that we also do a lot of community service projects. And Bulldog Inc., which paints the school over the weekend to make it look better, like, with school colors, purple, green, and gold. That's all I have right now, but, yeah.
Congratulations, and, you know, you're setting a great example for the other students, and I'm looking forward to seeing you working more events, you know, during the winter and summer as art walk continues, we look forward to seeing you there. Congratulations, can I hold on to that? Next, we have audience time, and we will be holding speakers to three minutes, I'll be timing it. First up is Sidney J. Massey, if you would please come up, give your full name and address, please, thank you. Sidney Massey. You're, okay, all right, you're all set, okay, thank you. Next would be Andrew Hayes. Mr. Hayes.
Good evening, my name is Andy Hayes, I live at 1620 Timberwoods Road, that's in the Daybreak Farm subdivision, in the ninth ward off River Road. At recent meetings, the Waukegan tax levy increase has been discussed with a figure as high as 21 percent. Based on research I've conducted, there are three points I wish to make. For my own tax bill, the other three key taxing bodies that affect my levy are all sticking with the 3 percent cap. Second, during the past six years, my property value has decreased 30 percent. My tax bill has not gone down, and that's because the taxing bodies keep up with the tax, and in fact, research I've done shows Waukegan is the reason. Third, the Waukegan tax levy is higher than neighboring cities, such that a similar property in Waukegan compared to a city in Wadsworth, Libertyville, Lake Bluff, will be about 32 percent higher in tax than the same property. Let me expand real quickly. Alderman Moiseo and Alderman Time last month, our last meeting challenged the people investigating the other taxing bodies. I live in an area where Lake County Board, Woodland School, and Waukeg- Warren Township are on my tax bill. I've contacted the leaders of those, they're all staying at 3 percent. Second, the valuation in my house has gone down 30 percent. If you look at the assessed value by the assessor, it's gone down $105,000 on what they give, what they list as my assessed value. However, in 2006, when I first moved here, Waukegan's portion, when you look at the city, the pension, the park, and the library, accounted for 25 percent of my levy, it's now 30 percent. And in fact, when I do line-by-line item, only Waukegan has gone up as a portion of my tax, all the rest have gone down. Finally, you're visible to tax people buying houses right now. Basic information on a person making a purchase, they can see the list price on the house, and they're gonna see the property tax. I reviewed 24 houses for sale, 42 houses for sale in the area, 24 in Waukegan, 18 outside. I created a tax ratio, the amount of tax divided by the list price, that's where I came up with this 32 percent number. Each of you received an email from me on November 6 with the data on that, I really encourage you to take a serious look at that, because that's a problem confronting people wanting to buy properties right now in Waukegan. And if you expand beyond, go up in the tax levy even more than any other neighboring cities, that's gonna go up even more. In my email on November 6, I noted, "I recognize the city has serious budget issues, I do not believe we can tax our way out of that." Mayor Sabozian was nice enough to respond, and he asked me if I was willing to give up on services. I said yes. I do not advocate further reductions in police and fire, however, I do believe a complete review of the tax line-by-line, or the budget line-by-line, with unbiased decisions on every line item needs to be made. If you wish to invite citizens to participate in that process, I volunteer. In closing, thank you, and the aldermen who have listed, thank you for listening to me tonight, and please make a well-reasoned decision.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jesse Evans. Kate Colomar.
Well, I certainly, oh, excuse me, Kate Colomar, 429 North Avenue. I do not come up here with wonderful prepared notes like the gentleman before me, I come up here infuriated and impassioned. If every single member of this city council does not do something to reduce the crime that is occurring in my neighborhood, the open use and sale of drugs, that's bad enough. A murder in my neighborhood last year, which we all had to go through, and now we have bullets flying in my neighborhood that are landing in the wall of a six-year-old girl's bedroom. I'm not making it up, I'm not exaggerating one bit, a parent woke up in the morning to find a bullet in her child's bedroom wall. If this city council cannot figure out some way to improve on the, decrease the crime in my neighborhood, every single decent neighbor in my neighborhood is ready to board up their house and move. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Belo, I live at 1026 West Pacific Avenue in Waukegan, and I just want to echo what Colleen has had to say. I was at Art Walk this weekend, I had a great time hanging out with friends, we were hanging out on North Genesee Street until 1:00 in the morning. I get home, and the next morning, as I'm reading Facebook, I find two of my friends who live six blocks from where I had been hanging out, had bullet holes through their homes. This is unacceptable, something has to be done. And as long as we're talking about art, I'm a little concerned about the art space thing, where originally we were told that there were gonna be units available for people who were making 30 percent of the median income, and come to find out now that you have to be pre-listed on some kind of HUD list in order to qualify for those. This is a bait and switch, we were not told about this initially, it's frustrating for a couple of my friends who are at that income level with families, and we're hoping to move into art space, and now they're, it's a bait and switch, that's a bunch of crap. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure on number six, last name looks like McDonald, I'm sorry, I couldn't read the first name, could you?
I think I've seen the names about already.
Introduce yourself and address, please, thank you.
My name is Susie McDonald, I'm from 5401 Fairmont, from the Nichols and Dimes Farm in Alderman Rivera's Ward. I wanna address the tax increase, and I wanna say first of all, that the information about this meeting tonight unfortunately came to us very late, and therefore, I want you to know that I also represent 10 families, 20 of my neighbors. I also feel it's somewhat unfortunate that this meeting to talk about such a serious issue is happening during a holiday week when friends, family, and children are returning home, and hence, I feel we would have greater representation if it wasn't due to the timing. We, like many families in the Waukegan community, we have cut back, we have taken, we haven't taken a vacation in two years, we limit when and where we go out, I've reduced the cable bill, I've reduced the phone bill, and you would look at me and say, "I live in a wonderful neighborhood," and I do, and I thank the community for that. However, we also have a home in our neighborhood that's already in foreclosure, and the city does not receive any tax income from this. I feel that another tax increase, as you heard one of my colleagues from the neighborhood up the road, it continues to push down the value of our homes, and it increases the tax liability. This is a self-fulfilling prophecy for the city of Waukegan, because it doesn't receive increased revenue, more and more homes due to the price, due to the reduction in the value of the home due to the price increase, make our neighborhood very unattractive, more and more people may be foreclosed upon. We think that the tax increase that you've proposed of 21 percent is absolutely outrageous, even 8 percent, even 5 percent, and I don't understand how you can increase beyond a cap of three. Since we're being outrageous in tax increases, I wanna offer an outrageous cut, because I really haven't seen anything in terms of cuts, I'd like to suggest cutting football. Football is outrageous.
Yeah.
You don't have that responsibility?
We have nothing to do with the schools at all.
I use it as an example of innovation and being outrageous, it's known to cause head injuries and significant damage. We have to look at different ways of looking at how we can cut expenses. I think we have to look at what we have considered sacred cows, and reevaluate, and think through what are absolutely what we call vital budget items, and I think we need to look at this increase as something as significant to each and every one in the family of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Steve Urbanski.
Hi, good evening, my name is Steve Urbanski. My address is 4522 West Gavin Lane, I live in the Regency Wood subdivision in the ninth ward. I've also come here over concerns about the tax levy. We've lived in our home for about seven years, and we've seen our taxes dramatically increase over the last seven years. Most of this has been driven by the higher home values, but recently, as you know, the home values have come down quite a bit. But the taxes aren't going down, in fact, they're going up, which shocks me. You know, reasonable increases are understandable, 5, 10 percent, and higher seems reckless and irresponsible, especially in today's economy. We talk about reduction in services, and I haven't really given it much thought, but, you know, police and fire and things like that would be not a number-one priority. But I noticed in my subdivision, every Monday morning during the summer, a street cleaner came through and cleaned my streets. Does that seem reasonable? I've got the cleanest streets, I think, in Waukegan, so there would be a great place to cut services. So, in closing, I call on you guys to find out a way to stop rising property taxes, and please reconsider the increase, please reconsider increasing this tax levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Chuck Lakey.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Chuck Lakey, spelled L-A-C-K-E, but that's okay, I wanted to get it out there, so the, I've even got a nephew that changes last name legally. I live at 5531 Hilltop, also in Daybreak Farms. After listening to tonight's participants, I am grateful that the citizens are voicing their opinions and concerns, even though this was not the tax levy hearing, which took place in October, but there are still decisions are being made. Again, it's disturbing that it takes the word-of-mouth campaign to make sure that the message is being heard, and the taxpayers affected the most by these actions of the council. Yes, there are other levies being implemented, but as Andy and the rest of them have talked to you, they're also capped at 3 percent, and while we're in a home-rule city, 5 percent seems to be the target before, we have to talk about it, but we successfully have talked about it before, where we haven't gotten any tax increase, or no tax increase rate. Another item on the agenda tonight is a labor contract bargaining agreement for approval. Does a home-rule city council prevent the hearings or details of this being discussed in open format? Executive council seems to occur more than just for litigation issues. Again, the Waukegan News Sun, or the North Suburban Daily Herald, do not provide information for us to voice our approval, disapproval, or concerns. I'll bet that the only representative from the News Sun tonight is that cameraman sitting in the back of the room. The website is still not functional, and when it is set in a meeting, we will post it on our website, I'm confused, as to whether that is Facebook or YouTube. And it is apparent after all of the questions are raised, that there is still a real lack of concern for the taxpayer. We hear all about the activities that ruin the reputation of this community, but we do not hear enough about the activities that are being developed to help the community grow, particularly on the website, so that we can actually feel part of the community and try to help. Consequently, we feel that there is no real reason for us to help solve the issues in front of the council, and the issues in front of the council and the mayor as they are today. You really don't want to keep us informed, because you don't keep us into the loop, we don't hear about what's going on. Thank you, members of the River Road Corridor Group for coming here tonight, and I, in spite of the fact that you were all told the tax levy hearings are already held.
Thank you. Next is Violet Ricker.
Good evening, my name is Violet Ricker, I live at 203 West Water Street, and I'm also the Director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit organization. I just wanna take a couple minutes to tell you about some upcoming events, and then to tell you why I'm telling you about those upcoming events. This Saturday, Waukegan Main Street, along with a lot of downtowns across the country, will be celebrating Small Business Saturday. It's a way of recognizing the small businesses that are a big part of the community and showing our support for those, as opposed to the big-box stores and malls, so we'd invite you to join the mayor and state representative Rita Mayfield as they shop at some of our new businesses, all of which are listed at our website, waukeganmainstreet.org. We also have our annual Holiday Festival coming up, which is called Holiday Walk, that will be on Saturday, December 8. I'd encourage you to all come out to that, it's a really fun, family-friendly event, where all the kids can get little treats at the different stores and restaurants throughout Genesee Street. For the first time, we're also partnering with the Knights of Columbus, who will be selling Christmas trees at the corner of Genesee and Water Street, so I'd encourage you all to wait until December 8 to buy your Christmas tree, and then come do that downtown and start a new tradition. Finally, I'd like you to save the date for February 9, which is our annual Mardi Gras fundraiser that will be held at the Puerto Rican Society. It's a really fun event that helps us contribute to our mission of bringing more people and more businesses to downtown Waukegan. The reason that Waukegan Main Street exists is to address all of the concerns that have been brought up here tonight. I think that everybody agrees that we wanna live in a safe community, and that we wanna live in an affordable community. And what Main Street does in trying to bring more people and more businesses to downtown is to grow the local economy, which will grow all of those benefits. We want both of our schools and our city to have enough resources to continue all the programs that benefit everybody here. So if anybody's interested in learning more about that, or further details on art space, we're putting up a special section on our website that's frequently asks questions about website, about art space, because we're hearing a lot of concerns about those, and all of them have really good answers. So if anybody wants to talk to me after the meeting, I'd be happy to address those, or you can email me at violet@waukeganmainstreet.org, or call our office anytime at 847-623-6650. Thanks.
Thank you, Violet. Just real briefly, I wanna let the folks know, over in the sixth ward, particularly where the incident that you referred to occurred, that we met with the chief this morning, and we are going to be putting more manpower back in, but there's some other things that we're talking about that I don't wanna put out at a public meeting right now. But I did talk to the homeowner in question, we had a good talk this morning, and he understands the situation, so we will be taking some extra steps in that area to try, but it is, we've got a pretty good lead on what happened, but I'm not gonna say any more than that, okay? Just to let you know, it's not something that we ignore. That concludes audience time, thanks to everybody who spoke tonight, we appreciate your comments. Next, we have the minutes, I'd like to take a motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to approve the minutes of November 5, 2012, regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Next is resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments, committee reports, motions. First committee up is Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have two items for business. Item A, grant permission to allow the turning on of the transportation signal priority on Washington Street from Sheridan to Green Bay Road for the Pace Bus Company, this would assist in keeping the buses moving and more on time. I'm gonna make the motion, and hopefully somebody will second it, we can talk about it, so I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May, and...
What this is, is, it's for the Pace buses, there's some technology on all of those new stoplights that we had put in by the county, by a grant, that allows the bus to, if it's right there, extend the green light a little longer, so it can get through the green light, so that the bus can keep moving. That's basically what this is. There's probably pluses and minuses to all of that, but in our committee, we said, "Let's get it to the council and let the council decide," so...
Do we have any other comments or questions? Alderman Tempest.
What is the cost gonna be to the city of Waukegan?
The technology is already in there, Alderman, there is no cost specifically for this, but part of the grant that we got, and part of the deal that we signed, when they redid all those traffic signals, the 100 percent of the maintenance cost is on the city. Not just for this, lights go out, they get knocked over by a truck, whatever, the total maintenance cost for all of those lights that got redone, all the nice brown ones with the lights on it, we got the maintenance cost.
So, for us to go ahead and approve Pace's request, it's gonna cost us money?
No, it's, I mean, it's already there, it's not gonna cost us any money, it's already there.
Well, that's not what I heard before.
No, Tom, am I right, it's not gonna cost us any money to turn this on?
The technology has already existed.
Now, somebody hits that, somebody runs over a sign, somebody runs over one of those things, it gets knocked down by wind, yeah, we're paying for it, irregardless of the bus, we're paying for it.
Alderman May.
I just wanna point out that the agreement was signed in 2008 for this.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Alderman Beedling.
Is there any potential conflicts with emergency vehicles traveling north and south? Do they have the same signal?
Chief and Tom are saying no.
They have priority.
Yeah.
Do they have a different signal system or something?
It's basically the same technology, but the fire, any emergency vehicle's signal would override any bus signal's vehicle.
Okay.
Is that correct? Thank you.
And again, remember, this vote is just to turn it on for the buses, which costs no money. The agreement that was signed in '08, we signed that in '08, somebody knocks down one of those brand-new, pretty signs, because they run into it, we're paying for it, that's irregardless of whether the bus thing gets turned on or not.
Alderman Conken.
I'd just like to make mention the fact that, yes, this was an agreement that was signed in '08, and the thing that I don't like about it, and I read and didn't realize it was that, in the contract, we have signed over all rights to all timing issues and all light issues and everything that goes with this, so unfortunately, they can turn it on without our permission, because we've granted the county all rights to all timing and signal issues, and I think that was mistaken when we did it eight years ago. I'd like to, I wish that the city had a little more input with the county, we work together, but what we signed four years ago says they have exclusive rights to regulate everything, so I'm not happy with that.
Seeing any other comments or questions? This is a voice vote matter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have two nays, the eyes have it, thank you.
And our second order of business is grant permission to continue the purchase of water meters for the balance of the current fiscal year at new prices. The U.S. EPA has mandated that all water materials be lead-free beginning January 1, 2013. The current bid that we have is for regular brass and not lead-free brass, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May, do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Beedling.
I'd just like to make the comment that I think most of the old part of Waukegan, I have a lead pipe that goes from the water pipe from the street into my house, I don't see how a lead-free meter is gonna make any difference in that, seems like a waste of money, I wish the EPA would be a little more thoughtful before they mandate changes like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye, because we have to.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you. Thank you.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. Next is a Joint Finance Committee and Economic Development Committee, Alderman Rivera.
That's correct, Your Honor. We have two items on the Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee. Item A, approve a contract with Kane McKenna and Associates Incorporated, 150 North Whacker Drive Suite, 1600 Chicago, Illinois 60606, for TIF consulting services for the establishment of new TIF districts in our amount, not to exceed $95,000 plus necessary out-of-pocket costs from the item, line item, 10806-924436. All the members up here received and attached a letter, two proposals, one of course from Kane McKenna and the other from, and the other proposal from...
Freed.
Oh, down there somewhere.
That was Freed and Associates, I believe.
From S.B. Friedman.
Friedman, okay.
And Kane McKenna came in with the best proposal, and what they're going to be doing, obviously, is the, the need for these services are in a number of areas, primary of the redesignation of the lakefront and downtown TIF districts, you know, that we have been discussing for the past year and as we work towards closing out the existing TIF districts. These expenses are TIF-eligible and will be reimbursable by the new TIFs. As you see in the proposal, depending on the final boundaries of the TIF districts created and whether the financial analysis component is selected, the cost will fall between $75,000 and not to exceed the amount. We have found in the past engagements with Kane McKenna that they are definitely very attentive to controlling costs for the city as much as possible. Again, following the creation of the new TIF policy and process and the formation of the new Waukegan Economic Development Advisory Board, this is the latest step in our efforts to continue to improve the city's approach to economic development. We respectfully request that the city council approve a contract with the Kane McKenna and Associates Incorporated for the work that they will be, that is necessary to create, you know, the TIFs. They're going to be working, they're going to find out how large these, the TIFs are going to be. They're going to be working with our staff. They're going to try to find out which, you know, the eligibility of these properties, which would be eligible, the developmental plan. There are certain components for that, a TIF budget and a financial analyst. Also, there's possible residential, you know, what housing impact study is needed. So, you know, with our current TIF laws, it's important that we have a firm like this working for the city, Your Honor, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approve an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Art Space Projects Incorporated and Cartridge Art Space Lofts Limited Partnership, allowing the city of Waukegan to recoup, to recoup $151,834, approve for sidewalk improvements over a 10-year period at 10% of the cost per year through a deduction in the TIF reimbursement beginning in 2013. What Noel and our Corporation Council, Anna, and, excuse me, Ann and Lynn, if they want to come up here and explain it, they worked out a special assessment with Art Space and worked out a 10-year agreement, starting in 2013, 10% of the cost of the sidewalk, which comes up to about $45,000 per year, but go ahead, Noel, if you want to.
Sure.
Add on to that, please.
As you know, last month, city council approved a project at the Art Space location to replace sidewalks, fill the vaults underneath, et cetera, for a total of a little over $151,000. As part of the discussion about that project, we talked about a way for us to recoup that money from the project. We didn't pursue it as part of the same motion because we hadn't had the legal materials drafted yet. We weren't sure whether it was going to be able to be an assessment of some sort or recouping it this way. What this is, is an amendment to the current redevelopment agreement. That redevelopment agreement requires a reimbursement by the city from the TIF increment of part of the property taxes that are paid by that property for the length of the agreement. This takes the first 10 years of that agreement and reimburses the city at 10% of the cost of the project, so roughly $15,000 a year, that we will take off the reimbursement before that payment is made to Art Space. So the estimate at the time of the redevelopment agreement was that they would be paying $45,000 in taxes per year that we'd be reimbursing. So this way, for the first 10 years, we'll take off about $15,000 before we make a reimbursement payment, and we would instead be reimbursing them $30,000 a year so that over the 10-year period, we're recouping our $150,000.
Thank you, Noel. Thank you, Noel. Alderman Tempest.
Thank you, Your Honor. I remember this came before us, $151,000 to repair the sidewalks at the Cartridge Hotel. And then I was explained, and I voted no because I thought $151,000 is too much money for sidewalks, which later I learned is part of the foundation of the building, which should have been their cost. Then you told me that $151,000 would close the TIF account. Close it. That's the money that we had left there. Was I correct in that?
That's part of the closeout budget. As you know, we've closed that TIF effective December 31st of this year.
So now we closed it out, and now we're coming back and getting the money back again over 10 years? How does that play out legally?
We have an ongoing redevelopment agreement with that project. That location will be in one of the new TIF districts, whether it's one or two or three districts. That location will remain in a TIF district, so that reimbursement will come out of that new TIF district. It's an act of legal redevelopment agreement.
It's confusing. You closed out one TIF, now you're going to go, and you're supposed to give that money to help it develop, and now we're coming back and we're charging them money to put it back? I'm a little confused.
Alderman, the finance department has actually, with your approval, escrowed funds for the reimbursement to Art Space over the next probably couple of years until the new TIF is put in place. Under the redevelopment agreement with Art Space, which had been approved last year, about a year ago, they're entitled to a 90% reimbursement of their property tax payment over the years, but now if you approve this new amendment to that agreement, they will pay that back, will take $15,000 basically off the top of their reimbursement every year for 10 years. So they will be responsible for that sidewalk payment, but it's just being drawn out over a period of years.
Are we getting any interest on that?
No, Your Honor, no, Alderman. Sorry about that. No. As part of the agreement, there was some discussion of a special assessment or something else like that. Those are...
Could you get me a loan like that? No interest for 10 years?
I'm not a banker, sir.
Okay. I'm getting money back. That makes me happy.
And that's the bottom line here.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Well, do we have the second on that?
No.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
I vote aye, and thank you very much, Noel and Ann.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. That concludes the Joint Finance Committee and Economic Development. Next, we have Labor Relations. Alderman Moiseo, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, one item, recommendation to approve collective bargaining agreement between City of Waukegan and International Association of Firefighters Local Number 473, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Conken. Do we have any comments or questions?
One, well, me and Alderman Conken.
I'd just like to make a comment. Ladies and gentlemen, your firemen, this is a union that took 0% raises for the last couple of years. They took furlough days, and the biggest thing that we have to be proud of these guys, they spent nine hours to negotiate this deal, and they didn't use any lawyers, so it didn't cost us any money. So I just want to tip my hat to the firemen. I think they've done, they bargained in good faith. They've always come through for the city, always stepped up to the plate, and I'm very happy that we reached an agreement so quickly. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
May I comment?
Oh, yes, Alderman Tempest, sure.
Contract, one thing that I read in it I still don't like, a fireman can live all the way down to Highway 80. I'll repeat that for those, I'll get closer to the mic. I said a fireman can live all the way down to Highway 80 and still be a fireman of the city of Waukegan. That is not good. We need to start working to bring them back, the new hires and so forth. We need to start working the negotiations to bring them back, and I don't care if you got to negotiate from now until hell comes. I'll sit at the negotiating table and I won't change my mind. That is ludicrous. It needs to be changed. However, I do give them credit for negotiating. It's not a 2% raise because they're getting, as I read the contract, they're getting a raise three months early. So if you're getting a raise three months early, it's more like, what, 2 3% raise maybe? So we have to keep our cost down. Many people are getting no raises at all. And a fireman, yes, they're heroes, but it's a good, steady job. No layoffs. It's a good job. And one thing I have to say to the chief, he's got a great department, well-trained firemen in the city of Waukegan, but how many, how many more can I afford? At one time, we were going to lay off 15. The vote on this council was five to four to take it down to 95 and close the station. Then they negotiated in very good faith. They cared about their brothers in the union. I take my hats off to them for that. Then we went up to 110 because we hired, instead of laying off 15, we hired five more. Now we're back to 110 from cutting down to 90. Now we just hired on a grant, seven more, I believe, but we can't lay off anybody. Now our hands are tied for the next four years, which costs your retirement benefits and everything else. So it's a catch can, yeah. Uncle Sam said, "Here, we'll give you this grant," but it has strings attached, and we have to start wising up. We sometimes cannot afford to take some of these grants, and that's my concern because I don't see the economy turning over that fast. I hate to be a staser. I don't see it. I don't see it. In Greece, already 43% unemployment. You know, we're not far behind if we don't tighten up. The lady here just gave, her budget had to cut. I'm looking at getting rid of the cable TV and put up an antenna again. I'm trying to find somebody to do it. We have to cut costs here and there, and some might tell me, "Oh, it's just a few dollars." And I told you all, the piggy bank. You put a little money in the piggy bank here, a little money in the piggy bank here, pretty soon you have something, but the little dollars, you have to watch. And again, I compliment the mayor, and we're working with the union. It's probably one of the fastest negotiations we've ever done, and Mayor, you kept the cost down.
Nine hours. No attorneys on either side. On either side. Ours too. Nine hours.
We have to acknowledge Perry Kurtz and the chief on this effort because...
A good chief.
...they're the ones who did a great job in sitting down, and plus the fact that the union negotiators came to the table in absolute good faith.
That's important.
Yes.
And I think all of our unions need to get a message, Your Honor, that we need to negotiate in good faith and look at the economy and where we are and as our assess valuations go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Moiseo.
The only union that beat him in time, Alderman Tempest, was the Public Works Supervisor. One meeting, done.
Not bad.
Point of order.
Great, thank you.
Call for a question.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Thanks to the Labor Relations Committee. Next, we have old business. We had the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May, to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes of the city of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, for the 2012 tax levy year. This was requested to be held over by Alderman Newsom. It cannot be held over in the same fashion. I'm going to allow Corporation Council to explain what the process will be so everybody has a clear understanding.
So it's been held over once by the chair of the committee, so now we need either a motion to table it or to postpone to a specific date. I would suggest tabling it. That way, it comes automatically up at the next agenda with no fuss, no muss.
Do we have a motion to table by Alderman Newsom? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Beedling.
Three-quarters of our budget is in police and fire, and 85%, I believe, of our employees are unionized. I belong to a private sector union. I have two brothers out in the audience out here. We're in the carpenters' union. Our pension fund is in the yellow zone. That means the difference is made up from the members out of our pocket. Public sector unions are much different. It comes from the taxpayers' pocket. It's difficult. There are state laws that we're obligated to follow. I wish things were more flexible, but when 85% of your employees are unionized, our hands are pretty much tied. I don't know how much of that 21% funds the current operation. That's what I'd like to find out. I don't think anyone wants to reduce the size of our fire or police force. Other than that, there's not much to cut.
No.
No, no, please.
Here, Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't, I'm getting specifics. I don't have it now, but just to address some of these people that are concerned, as I'm sure there's more people that I've talked to out there, but in the last, maybe Tina might be able to help us with this, but in the last three years, how much of our workforce have we cut?
50%.
Over 60% of the city workforce has been cut in the last three years. 60%. So we have tightened our budget. We have. Now, if you'd like specific numbers, you can contact me and I will get them for you. We've cut 60% from a service industry that serves the taxpayers of Waukegan. 60%. 60.
Can I finish my comment?
Alderman Beedling, please. It's okay.
I was saying about my union, 16% of our hourly rate goes to shore up our pension fund. On the state side, it's much different. It comes from the taxpayers, and if you look at some of the laws, it's very difficult to deal with. That's what the fight in Wisconsin was all about, but there's a big difference between But there's a big difference between private and public sector unions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
The eyes have it. So that, that item is tabled pending the next meeting. We have no reports in communications. New business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated November 14, 2012, in the amount of $1,332,193.14. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated November 19, 2012, in the amount of $1,460,545.9. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item C, approval of termination of leasehold for property commonly known as 129 Market Street. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item D, except in place on the treasurer's report for the month of October 2012. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Beedling. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, thank you. Item E, approval of the execution of the quitclaim deed from the Waukegan Armed Forces Reserve Center to transfer a portion of the property commonly known as 1721 North McCary Street. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Under ordinances and resolutions, item A was mistakenly included in the agenda that was approved months back. Item B, resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 110 South St. James Street. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Yes. Yes.
It was brought before council, but we have a hold on item A during the agenda.
Okay.
That's why it's under secret for the number. I don't think it was ever, I don't think it was ever voted on. It was a document that, that's true. It passed.
That was passed.
It was passed.
Anne Wimper.
I just was, I happened to be working on a custodial waterman agreement for that property this evening before the meeting. The approval of the conditional use permit for the laundromat did pass, according to the minutes, on February 21st.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the reason.
Appreciate your checking on it. Thank you very much. We do have a brief executive session tonight. So, it's settlement of claims, but we'll do the alderman's time first, go into executive session, then we come back out of that meeting and we close the meeting for the evening. But for all extents and purposes, after alderman's time, the meeting is over for the public then. Unless you would just like to have us, watch us adjourn for the night. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Rivera. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the River Road residents being here and voicing their opinion on the tax levy. Don't think that I've been not receiving the emails. God bless you.
Thank you.
Especially the one from Mr. Hayes. You know, I'm taking in consideration all of your letters that I've received in the past few months. There have been a lot of them. And I agree that 21% is totally outrageous. I'm a taxpayer too, as well. And I'd like to see other options that, that will be presented to us. But I just want to let you know that I totally agree with 21%. Not, that is just totally ludicrous. So I appreciate everyone being here. Besides that, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving coming up this week. And again, you know, my phone is always available. You can always call me and let me know what your concerns are. I appreciate that, thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a point that I've been getting quite a few phone calls, especially in the area of the 2nd Ward, where we've got a lot of issues with people running businesses out of their homes. I realize that this happens quite a bit and it's something that the city likes to keep an eye on, but it's a little obvious when you're driving down the street at night and you see a trailer with a Bobcat on it, or you see a trailer full of landscaping equipment. And these are things that are not supposed to happen in residential areas. And the problem we got is that, I understand these people work all day long and so do our code enforcement, but when our code enforcement goes home, they will not catch the violators because of the, because of the fact that they're out working at the same time our code enforcement is. I'm thinking that we might have to do something to get our code enforcement to work on an off shift or possibly stagger a shift or something, especially at these times, because these machines and this equipment doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. And I'd like to see us do something about it. Other than that, again, thanks to the Fire Department for coming to an agreement so quickly, and I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. I'm done, thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, a couple of things real quick. I sympathize for the people when we've had this incidence of shooting and things of that sort. My in-laws live on a quiet street in Waukegan, and they have, they've had two incidences of shootings over, under a year, and both of them not related to anything with the neighborhood. So it's very frightening, it's very scary. We have a town of 100,000 people with a lot of transient people that live and come and go and things of that sort. It's not the Waukegan of 30,000 or 40,000 that a lot of people left in Waukegan grew up in. It's 100,000 people with a lot of transient renters in and out. I think that's one of our biggest problems, is we have too many rentals. I don't know how to get a handle on it. I've always told people the greatest thing about America is property rights, and the worst thing about America is property rights. I don't know how we get a, get a handle on it, I really don't. We have to try to keep thinking of ways to try to get more homeownership, responsible homeownership. I think that's maybe one thing, not that all renters are bad or anything like that, but I think if you looked at some statistics, that may bear out. But we have to try to do something. I don't have an answer for you on that. Another thing is there was an interesting article in Crane's Chicago Business indicating that the 500,000 federal emergency dredging of Waukegan Harbor has been totally undone by Hurricane Sandy. I was against that $25,000 to spend on that feasibility study. Again, the city, the taxpayer, you guys want us to save money. The taxpayer is going to spend money on a feasibility study to keep it open for two companies that paid a combined total of $31,459 in property taxes. That's, let's just cut to the chase. That harbor is going to get dredged so they can stay in business. Yeah, we'd like to get off the EPA decertification list, but the EPA keeps changing their standards for what that has to be. Well, now that may be, that may be totally undone, because there's no one, now that money's probably going to go to the East Coast. There's ways to make that harbor viable and safe and clean for a lot less money than allowing two companies with, one, National Gypsum has 46 employees, and they paid $28,000 in property tax, and St. Mary's has one part-time employee, and they paid $19,000, which about $3,000 went to the city. So do you want to spend $40 million to keep two companies open? Or whatever the, the price was to dredge that harbor? You want to talk about saving money? That's how you save money. That's how you save taxpayers' money. Start saving at the federal level, start saving at the, at the state level, and start saving it here. That's how you save taxpayers' money. Because at the end of the day, we're all paying for all of it anyway. So that's how you save taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
To mention the pension issue again, I, I would urge all the taxpayers to seriously look into the business that our state legislature is conducting. A lot of our problems stem from there. They have not addressed the pension issue for decades. The governor, I got an email, "Thanks in advance," it said. He refers to a $95 billion pension shortfall. It's actually, if you read the Illinois Policy Institute, I subscribe to that, $223 billion. They don't include the current workers and into the future for them. The state of Illinois needs to fix these problems. Our budget, yes, it, it takes a good chunk out of people's tax bills, but the school district, teachers' pension is way behind. Taxpayers are on the hook for all this. Businesses are leaving the state, people are moving out. I think we lost 850,000 people. Bad business climate in Illinois. We're struggling here, trying to keep things going. I wish the state would get serious and do something right for the taxpayers for a change. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving on that note. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I'd like to say there's a lot of things going on in our community, listening to the lady that spoke tonight about the shootings in the 6th Ward, there's shootings in the 5th Ward, there's shootings in the 1st Ward, 2nd Ward, 3rd Ward, all over the city. And we are working to address those issues. As Alderman Moiseo said, that we have a lot of people in this community that did not grow up in this community. They're coming in from all over the place. We did hire new police, more police, and that's at a cost. We heard from the community that they, that we need more police, so we're doing that. That's at a cost. And we're doing what's expected of us to keep our community safe. And in spite of all of that happening, we still have a lot to be thankful for. Our community could be a lot worse than what it is, like some other communities I won't name. But we do have a lot to be thankful for, and I'd like to say that I'm thankful for all of you. I'm thankful for our, our staff, our department heads. They do a lot to run the city and run it in a good way. I'm happy and thankful for all my colleagues here on the council. And I'm thankful for having nine and a half years to serve the residents of the 5th Ward. I'd like to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest, thank you. First, I guess I should talk about my, not the dog pond, the animal shelter. I was corrected the other day. So many times I think it's the dog shop, but it's the animal shelter. We really have, Mayor, a wonderful lady running our, our animal shelter. They've started volunteers helping. It's a community, well, if we could all do like they did there at the dog pond, getting community to volunteer to help. I look at some animal shelters that are run, wow. I mean, North Chicago had a can of worms, they finally got it straightened out, but it was horrible. And the lady we have, Susan, what a great job she does for us, really. I mean, animals are compassionate, they're, they're helping. People need food, they try to help them that way, and they try to adopt the animals out. And we're so fortunate to have the animal shelter that we have. And I, I've been rather active in that, and they do have a, a group now that meets at, over at Finn's office here, what is that, the first, what day is that there? Help me there, are we up here?
First Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM, 128 Northwest Street, and the name of the group is Wags, Waukegan Animals Getting Saved, and all are welcome.
Well, thank you. I think you should be recognized, because it's a great job your group is doing now, helping, helping the city save money, too. I mean, our expenses that we used to get, you take them down to the animal shelter and down the way, and they dot them out, and sometimes they go to Dog Heaven immediately. It's a fact of life. But this group has been able to rehabilitate some of the animals and, and really helped in a great way with the city, and I really appreciate that. The other thing, leaf pickup is coming to an end. I think we got, Tom, can you help us on leaf pick? Is Tom gone? We got, what, one more week to go, I believe, on leaf pickup? He's going to clean things up, so I would encourage you, if you have just a small pile, to put it in a paper bag. I mean, it's not going to blow around there, it's there, and Onyx will get it picked up. Crime in the 6th Ward, we had a lady here today. I've been alderman here for, hell, 37 years. I make house calls, though, and if you call me, I come. But you know, fear is a terrible, terrible thing. Fear. And to get people worked up with fear in their hearts is not good. Our police department is on that case. It's going to involve something else, I'm sure. They tie things together pretty good. This has happened before. It's sad, it's very sad. It is very sad. But it's a way of life sometimes, and we're, we're entering into another area, which I don't like to see in the United States. People are becoming desperate, we're getting people that don't care, they're on drugs. Our Waukegan Police Department just made some drug raids in my ward. It takes time sometimes to develop a case to get them. Our police department is short of men. We've cut. We've cut. And can we afford to cut? Not anymore, no. So where do we get the money from? Part of our problem, you face it very well, those of you that told how your assessed valuation have come down. Back in, oh God, years ago, under Bill Morris, he had our tax rate down to 99 cents with an 8% utility tax. Eventually, it went to $1.67 once under sewer ban, back to $1.60 and under Hyde administration, when we had a lot of building going on. We had more assessed valuation coming onto the rolls. So our tax rate was about $1.40, real close. Just recently, went to $1.98, and this year will be over $2. But your assessed valuation has gone down. Our assessed valuation in the city of Waukegan, we used to be able to count on, we're going to increase our assessed valuation 10, 11% with more houses being built, population expanding. But that has changed, as house sales have gone down. I thought my house was worth 190,000 once. Right now, well, I'm not going to sell anyway, I'm not leaving, I'm going to die in that house, but I'll be around a while, don't worry about it. Probably worth 125, maybe, if I could get that much, if I could get that much. But I don't care, I tell people, citizens out there, you know, it's your home. If you went to rent a house like you have, what would you pay a month? Probably what your payments are. Probably what your payments are. No, probably tax, well, you're in a high-rent district. And we do have to be aware of that, we really do. As far as out where you live, I'm in favor of protecting the integrity of your neighborhoods out there. I'm in favor of that. I know some of you have concerns. And the last thing I was going to talk about, code enforcement. Code enforcement, we've been kind of short-changed there a little bit, we're working hard at it. And we cannot allow our city to deteriorate. We cannot allow it. We have to continue to fight and, and help people. So many times, when I've had houses go under, Your Honor, I've had the neighbor cut the front grass on the parkway. And we have to look out for each other. And we need to, the last point I want to make is I've seen an increase in people getting together. It's called Neighborhood Watch. It's called Neighborhood Watch. And the police department does a beautiful job of organizing that with your cow down there or your alderman, they'll set it up for you. But learning to know who your neighbor are, getting to work together. You go on vacation, my neighbor on vacation, I got the key to the house. I take the mail in, feed the dog, you know? It's just getting to know your neighbors. And as times get tougher, we need to start looking out for our neighbors.